All right, we'll move forward to resolutions and ordinances to amend the sections of the charter and code relating to the city elections and the election board. Do we have the, yes, the election board chair, Ms. Susan Carey, along with our city attorney, Ashley Boucher. We're pivoting.
I'm here, sit down.
All right, so we've been working very hard since the last election to address some issues that we encountered prior to the election and during the election. And this is what the election board has done in the past. I think we've come, since I've been city attorney before you, at least once or twice with charter amendments. Maybe it was last year or so that we updated with respect to absentee ballots, to mail-in ballots. We also had some changes to our election code. So these are just consistent with, you know, the board's prerogative to kind of see what the issues are and to address them. And this also was before you, maybe in February or so, like at the start of this year. So I'm going to recap what's already been presented since it has been some time and then address some new things that hadn't been presented back in February. So we have one, two, three, four, five charter amendments and then two amendments to the code. The first charter amendment proposed, there was consensus to move this one forward. And I'll just refresh your recollection. This is to amend the charter to add that all references to city or Salisbury in the city charter and municipal code shall mean the city of Salisbury. I think that's pretty self-explanatory and that's reflected in SC 1-1. So the language that is being added is all references to the city, city or Salisbury. And this charter or the Salisbury municipal code shall mean the city of Salisbury. Do you want me to move? I think it may be easier to address questions for each charter amendment, yes.
Counsel, any, I know that was brought forth about the definition of the municipal boundaries and-
Correct.
Yes. Any questions?
Okay. The second is a resolution to amend SC 2-2 of the city charter to further classify the qualification requirement to run for council and maintain a seat on council. When this was presented back in February, there was consensus on this one. There were no issues, but again, to refresh your recollection, what we were proposing or the election board was proposing or recommending is to change the word from resided to domicile. We were added, again, just to be clear, talking about the city of Salisbury. And I think that that's just basically it on that one. We're just striking any reference to resided to domicile, which has a legal definition. And we will touch upon that in a little more detail when we get to the packet because we've explained that a little more. Okay.
Counsel, any questions, comments?
And that's consistent with the county's? Is it their wording or their requirement is domicile?
To be honest with you, I'm not sure what Combs County uses, but there are a number of jurisdictions our board looked at, a number to see how it was defined. And domicile is one that was frequently used. And one of the reasons why I think they are recommending that is it has a legal definition as opposed to reside, which is very broad. And then we have different definitions of reside within our own charter and code. So to not confuse the two, we're just making a distinction here and referring to against domicile.
Sure, okay.
Good?
Yep.
Okay. Next is SC 3-2. And this is basically the same thing, but it's the requirement to run for mayor. And again, there was consensus back in February when this was presented. So the only change being to change from resided to domicile. And then we just wanted to also make clear that the mayor must be a qualified registered voter of the city. The word registered was not, was omitted and we think it's important that it be added. Okay. All right.
What distinguishes qualified? I mean, could be registered and unqualified?
I don't know exactly what qualified means. That was already there, but that's why we thought it was important to clarify that they were registered.
Okay.
The fourth resolution is to amend section six of the city charter, which is regarding or governing elections. And this was one in which there were some issues that you wanted the committee or board, sorry, to go back on and discuss. So I'm going to take those one at a time. The first is to section SC 6-6, which is nomination. And the proposed change is adding that the certificate of nomination shall be filed under oath, meaning under the penalties of perjury. That was not initially, or has been not a requirement, and we think that that was important. When this was presented to you back in February, there was proposed language of any and other info required by the city election board. And I believe counsel felt that gave the election board too much discretion or authority to ask for information. So after going back, they took a look at it. And so that language is not proposed anymore. So at this point, it's just the nomination form will have an added oath to it, that just when signed, that they're signing under the penalties of perjury. SC 6-9 is regarding the election of mayor and council. This was proposed back in February. My recollection is that there were no issues with that. But to recap, it would read that all elections shall be held and conducted in accordance with the provisions of this charter, the city code, and applicable ordinances, which may include provisions for early voting and in accordance with Maryland state law and regulations. So to the extent that our code or charter does not address this, just allows what we already do in practice is defer to the state law. Okay. And I don't believe this was presented back in February, but as we were going through the campaign packet, which we'll talk about, there were some omissions that we realized. And so we were working on those forms and felt like there should be authority for them in the charter. And that is regarding write-in campaigns. My understanding is in this last election, we did have the first write-in campaign. And so we're proposing a new section, SC 6-16, which says, "An individual who seeks election for any public office in the government of the city of Salisbury as a write-in candidate shall file a certificate of nomination with the city clerk in the form and by the deadline as required by Maryland state law and regulation. Any write-in campaign and voting for a write-in candidate shall be governed by Maryland state law and regulations." So we're, again, just deferring to state law, but thought it was important to address this issue because our charter was silent as to write-ins.
Thank you.
And then also adding SC 6-17, which is certificates of withdrawal, adding, "An individual who has filed a certificate of nomination may withdraw the candidacy by filing a certificate of withdrawal on the form prescribed by the city of Salisbury election board within the time prescribed by the board." Again, there was, our charter and code was silent. If someone wanted to withdraw, how that would occur.
Okay.
I have both.
So those are the proposed resolutions, which are again, to amend the city charter, which follows a separate process than amending the ordinance. As you know, it's, our charter is our constitution. And so it requires that there be a public hearing and unlike when we make amendments to the code. So at this point, I think if you have, what we like to do, because it has to be published and the newspaper is, when counsel is ready and comfortable, that we do it all together so that way they all track at the same time.
Gotcha. And that's for all the charter amendments? And then we're going to get to the code amendments-
Correct.
Separate, okay. Go ahead.
Well, do the code, you may address under the code. Go ahead. I'll wait till the very end to make sure that I'm not asking the same.
Susan, do you have anything to add on the charter amendments?
No, I mean, just accept that we really took what your comments in place and we really worked very hard on this to make sure we covered every, everything.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the-
Especially based on the previous election.
Yes.
We wanted to button up and tighten up everything.
That was an election. But I appreciate you addressing the comment about the, you know, the ambiguity of just asking for any document. That was, that was a concern for myself and for, you know, elected officials, you know, following me, that you all are protected, that you can't just ask for anything. So I appreciate you all going back to the drawing board and making that buttoned up a little bit more. So I think we're good to move forward.
So then moving forward to the ordinances, which would amend chapter 1.08. This is a section of our code entitled Election Board. And this would address, again, kind of, the board took a holistic approach, looking at the charter and the code, first being chapter 1.08. And I will summarize those for you because I don't know that this was before you back in February. The board thought it important to clarify its duties. We're proposing striking nomination by petition. We've searched the code, asked clerk's office what that could be. We're not aware of any nominations by petition. So we think that's peripless and recommend striking it. And then adding in that, to make clear that the board shall enforce the provisions of the city code and charter governing elections, qualifications for office, and campaign advertising and finance. So I think that's self-explanatory, but if you have any questions when we conclude, you can follow up with that. Application for mail-in ballots, just updating it to be consistent with what is the practice, and that is the deadline by the current Maryland state law and regulation for mail-in ballots.
A question for you, Ms. Boucher. So since, again, just going back to shall enforce the provisions of the city charter and code governing elections, qualifications for office. So I guess just asking, and I'm going to pivot to a word that my council member uses, process, so, or procedure. So if, if there is a question about, you know, what the process is, would that be brought to the city clerk, then brought to the election board? Or what is, how does that-
Correct.
Okay, so that is the process that should be happening. Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Because those are the arbiters of the election code.
Okay.
So it would be funneled through the city clerk.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you for clearing that up.
The other changes were just, again, updating with what we've been doing in practice. I think the mail gets delivered at 10, according to the election board for the county. So we're just updating that. And I think that is it. So relatively minor changes in our opinion.
Does that include the packet? Because I have a question, or no?
No, we haven't gotten to that yet.
Just as an FYI, Mr. Basehart, who is in my district, wanted me to share his, he wanted to support Susan and Ashley's presentation for the work and the diligence that went into this.
Appreciate that. To get that seal of approval, goodness.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
So the last piece of the puzzle in terms of amending the charter and code is the ordinance proposing to amend chapter 1.12 of the city code. And this is governing city election, campaign, advertising, and finance. And the board felt that that just needed a little bit of a overhaul since it's been some time since it had been reviewed. And so I will highlight for you these changes because I don't think that this was before you at all, back in February.
No.
So in terms of chapter or subchapter 1.12.020, books, records, and receipts, proposing adding a new subsection C, that all campaign funds must be deposited into one account open with a financial institution, and such funds shall not be commingled with any other funds or accounts and shall not be used for personal use, which is an obligation or expense of any person that would exist irrespective of the campaign of the candidate. I think that is what is envisioned to happen, but I don't think we explicitly stated it in our code. So we are making sure that that is clear. Campaign contributions, there was some concern that maybe that wasn't crystal clear either. So we are proposing adding language that a campaign contribution may be a gift, money, loan that is forgiven, or anything of value given to influence an election by either supporting or defeating the candidate. And then I guess one of the biggest changes is increasing the campaign contribution limit to 500. We did a survey of other jurisdictions. 250 was way low, yes. There, and so we felt 500 was reasonable. And I believe Harry did some calculation where mathematically, if he, I don't know, didn't inflation and whatnot over the last several years, he thought it would be around that number. So it was grounded in some type of rationality.
Yes.
Okay. Then that gets the changes to the co-governing loans.
Can I ask one question about that?
Yes.
What's the thinking behind returning or dispersing all the money at the end? That was, I was told I had to give it to a nonprofit. What's the thinking there? Well, I had money left over in my campaign, for example, and I had to give it out, which I did.
You had to zero it out, yes.
Why do you have to zero it out? Why is that part of, is that part of our code, not part of the state code, or no?
Because the campaign is over at that point.
It's just to be sleek and clear it out.
I mean, most people, most campaigns can carry money forward, but we, for some reason, clear it out. I don't know why we do that.
So like if you do a state election, right, you can keep the money. You can have a, because the intent may be that you may-
Rerun.
Do a campaign in the future. And I think that is one of the oddities that, you know, we're mandated to spend all the money or to donate it to a charity.
Not a problem.
And then we have to start all over from zero, you know, yet again.
What if you should, what if you needed the money that you've turned over to? My suggestion, not knowing, just a suggestion here, that at the end of a term, that it be turned over as opposed to when you finish campaigning? Because what if you incur expenses during your term as part of your responsibility as a councilperson? Then you don't have that amount, you don't have that money to tap into.
That's a weird, odd question, but I think, but making it make sense though is like, so I, my website, I still pay for that during, but that could be a campaign expense.
Right.
So I mean, I just think, I always thought that was odd. So thank you for bringing that up, that, you know, we have to zero it out and give it to a nonprofit.
Don't even bother me.
But it just doesn't, and I have to close the account and that does bring-
Yeah, I think that is just how it's been in practice. I think that there are a number of jurisdictions who do it that way, but I don't know that it's required to be done that way.
I don't think it should be, I mean, that's just, and again, I would love to hear the other councilmen. I don't think it should be required for you to zero it out or donate it to a, which that is a nice, I think that's an option, which is nice. And I, you know, love the opportunity to donate to, you know, my favorite charities in the area. But I think starting from zero and then closing the account, that's a hassle to do every-
Yeah, and then you have to do it all over again.
Every four years and-
But what if you don't run again?
Then you-
You close it out anyway.
Close it out and give it to a charity.
Even if you're running again, close it out, would be my suggestion, you know, or- Well, I mean, that's true if you run again, but if you aren't, it definitely has to be closed out.
Absolutely.
But then-
Where's that decided? When it's closed out, then? How about if you decide you don't want to run? And then you close it out and then you reopen it, or vice versa? How about if you decide you thought you were going to run? Then you took the money and then said, oh, I'm not going to do it. You're just going to make, I mean, I'm just asking.
Oh, yeah.
You're just going to make the decision to close it out at that point. Who's supposed to kind of monitor that, I guess?
Well, as of now, you, well, we have the statement of affidavit and the statement of perjury.
And a fine.
There's not really, I mean, you all just take a, you take our, our, an hour, but you take the candidate's word that they did close it, that they did donate to charity, that they did, so that, I would argue that there is not-
Yeah, good point.
A solid check or balance in place now. I'm not saying that to, but I'm just, you know, and there's some cities, some neighboring cities that don't even require campaign financial reporting, which I think is, but-
Wild West.
That's terrifying.
Yes, it is.
Terrifying.
I was shocked.
Oh, yeah, I know, same.
So is the recommendation that the report be due after the campaign, but not the requirement to zero out the balance? That that balance can remain until the end of the term? And then it could carry over if rerunning? And then if not rerunning at that point?
You have an outstanding, you have an outstanding report, yeah. You'd have to report your final.
Yes.
To take, for instance, you know, if Mayor Taylor did not zero out, so then if next cycle, he would have started, he would start with a thousand dollars, whatever the balance was, that's his starting balance and it goes from there.
Right.
And then we have to show proof? That we started from where we left off at.
You just have a bank account, you have a bank statement.
But I'm just saying, you have to have proof.
That answers, that brings up another question is, okay, so are we going to start, are we talking about running it like a state campaign? Because I've run a state campaign and you have to make a yearly report. If you're not actively in a campaign, you have to make a yearly report every year to the state as to what is in, what you have raised or what is still in your account. You have to make the numbers make sense. Me, I like the way we do things, zeroing it out and donating it to charity. I think, number one, that puts a lot of good faith into the people.
Yes.
Okay, people don't know what you're using your money for afterwards. And that, most people I've talked to have really liked that idea. I do appreciate the $500 because Pepperidge Farm remembers when you could buy us 100 signs for 250 dollars. Those days are long gone. But we would have to institute some sort of yearly statement, I think, if that were the case, which is a lot of paperwork on Julie and the election board and that sort of thing. I'm not trying to make more for her, she's got enough to do.
I don't want it.
Number one. And number two, having gone through the auditing process and getting ready to go through it again at the state level, I can promise you, you don't want to have to do that every year. It is a pain in the rear. If you are off by a penny, you have to find that penny. The math doesn't make sense. I tell people all the time, campaign finance math is this math of all on its own. I've never seen anything like it in my life. And having done it at the state level, it is extremely difficult to keep tabs on stuff consistently from January to January.
I don't mind, I just was curious.
You get comfortable doing it all the time. And I like that we just do it during the election cycle here. And I think that, I would like to keep it that way, but I mean, obviously, if everybody else would like to-
I prefer doing it just like we've been doing it, I do. It keeps down a lot of headache. And like as Michelle said, you don't have to keep reporting. And then you don't want to be in the sector of being accused of being misappropriating money. Uh-uh, no. Let it, I love it like it is.
May I say something?
I love it like it is.
I just want to speak from this position, if I could.
I mean, I think we, yeah, but you can, yeah.
So doing it the way that we're doing it makes it so much cleaner. You're, you're closing out an account, you have to have a zero balance. And I can speak, just from this last election, the financial reports are a nightmare.
They are.
They are very difficult to follow.
Set mine.
It has to come out and I, and I'm, it has to come out to the penny, or we're talking again. So to have to do that every year, especially, you know, if you're talking about being able to use those funds throughout your term. Okay. That is going to be so much more work. And it's just so much cleaner to have an account for the campaign, exhaust your funds appropriately, close it out. And then in four years, you're starting from fresh again.
I would make a recommendation for anybody who's running for office, if they want to keep a running tab of money, to have a state account. You don't, you don't have to necessarily be running for a state office to have it. I still have a state account. That allows you to fundraise outside of regular cycles, like the city of Salisbury. So that, I think, would be something that I would encourage people to do. And once you have to deal with the state system, you will understand why. I am telling you, this is beautiful the way it is. I can tell you right now, the software they use is, I'm convinced is circa 1994. So.
The other thing too, that I just thought of, is you may contribute to a campaign for this particular election. We all know that a lot of things can happen in four years. You may not want to continue contributing to the same campaign, you know? So what may not have been used before, if you're carrying that over, you know, they might not want that to carry over and go toward that particular person's campaign. You know, I don't know. But again, it's cleaner to close it out, zero it out, start over again. Yeah.
Well, I guess we don't need, if, at this point, you would need to instruct us to add that or make that change because as it's currently drafted, that was not a proposed change. Okay. Additionally, the amount for loan forgiveness was increased, let me see, make sure of this, that to $500. I'm sorry, to 1,000. It was 500, increased to 1,000. And up to $500 can be forgiven. But you can't, for instance, donate 500 and then also give a loan and then have that loan be forgiven because then in effect, you would be donating 1,000. So it is considered in the aggregate. I don't think that there was anything regarding campaign transfers, and we thought that was important to include. So that's a new subchapter 1.12.35. And that a transfer is a monetary contribution made by one political committee to another. A political committee shall not transfer more than $500 to any political committee per campaign. This is consistent with the state election law. The only difference being is we're making it consistent with the campaign contribution limit of 500 for us. There was a change to when the campaign finance report is to be filed, that it's changed from 7 to 21, clarifying disclosure statement, which is not a term that we use, to campaign finance report, striking the language about when a report, before there was an exclusion or an out, that if you had received contributions less than $600, you wouldn't need to file a report. But we thought for uniformity and fairness, everyone should submit a report. And if you only had $600 or less, it should be a pretty easy report to do, so. And then lastly, adding in regarding late filing of campaign finance reports, there is a late fee if a campaign finance report is not filed within the time. We added, or when filing is not complete or accurate as required by chapter 1.12.040. So just someone can't circumvent the rule or law by filing a report last minute that doesn't address any of the issues. So in effect, they're kind of buying themselves a continuance. So that is it for the proposed code changes to chapter 1.12.
My, I have a question. So in the packet, and maybe I'm a little, is that for, is that 1.12 or is that 1.08?
For the packet?
Yes.
It is, that was, that's actually, it's a separate thing. That's not living in any code or charter. It is just what in effect the clerk's office will need to kind of keep everything organized. So it would include the charter amendments we've discussed and both chapters of the code.
So in the, I think that's page three of the, of the packet. So guidance for candidates regarding the domicile requirement. I think that is far too like loose and it's just, again, ambiguous. Seeing other cities, which they don't have financial disclosure requirements, but they, they require you, when, when you are filing for election, you bring yourself, you know, the notarized form, your ID with a W-2, with a, you know, a mortgage statement, a lease, a, you know, some sort of bill, something that has it. This just says, you know, you of course, sign the affidavit stating the certificate of nomination and that there may be additional criteria. I just think that, again, if we're, we talked so much in detail about the financial portion of it, but we didn't even talk about, I mean, just the, but it's, it's saying, hey, we believe you, which is, you know, great. But I think we should have at least a couple of different mechanisms in place just to, so that we don't run into the issues that we did last year with, hey, hey, no. We've already figured this out at the, at the interim. This person is domiciled at this address. They brought forth one, two, or three portions of documentation that solidify that. And you're good.
Okay, I think we'd like to hear from everyone because I think we, our takeaway from the last meeting is that we, that there, we thought that was too prohibitive in making people producing the, any reports. So we thought-
And I remember it said any reports, but I think, so like, I don't, which I don't know how we, how we do this, but in this packet, it should say, you know, the candidates are required to submit, you know, from this list, two items from this list. And I think there's ownership of property, the address where it receives mail, statements of licenses. I mean, there's, which I didn't, I, you know, I guess excuse me for, for, you know, I don't want the balance to go, you know, one way or the other, but I think we should require people to, to, you know, submit some form of documentation that says- says that they.
Like the county does.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, I.
It's similar to what.
I was shocked that when I, when I went in, that I'd have to bring in, you know, a, a bill or a W2, anything that says.
Well, I think it should be your driver's license or a Maryland state ID.
Driver ID, tax.
Yeah, or a photo ID, but then again, they could change too.
Photo ID is not, that, you, that's once every.
Yeah, every.
Yeah.
Two, two months.
Blue, blue moon.
So, I think it should be your driver's license.
Utility bill.
And a utility bill, that's it. Because that.
Sorry, I want to speak in that, and I guess we're trying to go with what you were asking of us last time. We were trying not to overstep our boundaries.
That's right.
And specifying what we wanted from them.
So that was on this, I'm trying to remember where exactly that.
I do remember us saying.
Yeah.
There was a point about, something about schools.
I didn't think it was.
Showing notification where the child's, the parent's children went to school, and we thought that was very intrusive.
Oh, yeah, no.
So I think, maybe we misunderstood, but we tried to rein it back a little more, that if it provided someone, that's why we added the oath to sign under the penalties of perjury, which before, we did not have. So if, we thought if someone signed under the penalties of perjury, saying that they met those requirements, we would take that at face value, that we would only ask for documentation if we had reason to believe that, like, that there was an issue, because someone then complained, and then that would trigger the process of going through the complaint process. Or if council, or the, sorry, the board would look at that and say, well, that address is not in the city, and then to address it then. So I, I think that was the intent, from the board's standpoint, that they're now signing under the penalties of perjury, and that unless we had something to, that had come to us to rebut that or to call that into question, we would not ask for documentation. However, if someone were to raise the issue, then again, that would start the complaint process, and one of the things we would do would be to ask for documentation to substantiate it, and then we could dismiss the complaint.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. And I think, going back, I remember now, it's like the, the election board may ask for, and I think we negate all that if we just, if, if, if it is a part of the process, when you are filing, you bring this, this, and this. I think you, you negate that whole, the election board may ask for these documents, or, and, you know, sorry if I'm complicating things now, but I just think that, if, if there's so much.
Just so you know, the misunderstanding maybe at that time was, we thought that you were taking it, that we were taking too much power.
Oh, no, no, no.
No, I don't think that's what it was. I just think it was a little bit too much information. I mean, I think that, just like I said, a driver's license and a utility bill should be sufficient. We shouldn't need, I mean, and if you, and you're taking an oath, and you lie, then you have to deal with the consequences.
What does the county require? Are we in, are we consistent with the county, or does that matter?
They're with the state board of elections, right? And that's.
That's a state, that's a state board. And for the state, I believe it's just either a photo ID and, I think, two pieces of mail, I'm not sure. They have a list of things you can choose from.
Yeah.
You know, as long as it's not like the DMV, where I have to have.
Your new license is crazy.
Something signed in blood, undersigned under blue moon type of thing, you know? I mean, I think that that's. You know, I think, I think we've got some reasonable expectations for identification.
So are we hearing that you would like, I, I don't think that this requires an amendment to any of the, the codes, but Julie, who has put together this packet, we could change the certificate of nominations to reference that they must produce.
Some form of information.
Yeah, like, so like, how I see it, and I'm just, you know, Cambridge, their election is just now, there was a list of like, 10 things or eight things, and you said you must, that they required four, they said you must bring.
That seems pretty onerous.
But then they don't have financial statements, so I was, but, you know, they, it's a list of items, and they said you must bring, you know, a selection of these items with you, and then also, you know, a notarized, you know, oath, or a notarized certificate of nomination. So I see it that way, where, where the, where the candidate can choose, okay, I have my, you know, my driver's license and my mortgage, or I have my driver's license and utility bill, this suffices. And then that takes, there is no, then you don't have the phone calls and the, hey, this person, we have documentation, it's been set forth, we're done, like that.
But you could have a mortgage bill and not leave it out.
Well, but, but I'm, but, but as of now, we just had the person's word, I mean, so I think.
Yeah, but I think if you get the driver's license and you get a utility bill, I don't think we should go, it's just like you're getting into somebody's deep personal business. If, if they come and, and present the identification with a picture, ID, and a utility bill, or maybe two utility bills, I think that's discreet. I think that, that should be enough to validate. And if they take that oath, and like I said, and if they lie under oath, then.
Sure. I was just saying, there's, there's a list, so utility bill would be one of the options, but it's a list of things that you get to choose too. So if, if utility bill works for Councilwoman Jackson and something, something else, but.
You shouldn't have that much.
Yeah, we had, we were initially thinking that, but then thought that's was not, that we were, we were overstepping.
Oh, no.
Okay, so we can, we'll just add that back into the packet.
What do you add back in the package?
Just requiring that the time that the certificate of nomination is filed, that you want two items, two forms.
Yes, cool.
And there could be a list of what those could be.
Yeah.
They could be utility.
Yeah, you just have a list of what it could be.
Be.
Yeah.
Does that need to go before the election board for discussion, though?
I think we probably will, will need to meet regarding this meeting to, to debrief.
Okay.
Yes.
I have some additional questions. Back at this time, we had a discussion, there was some, we discussed some things about that a candidate must be in good standing with city employment for eligibility to run, and that they should not have any fines or fees with the city for eligibility to run. I don't know if they made the list, or we had any further conversation about those. Do you remember that, President, anybody?
I don't know if we talked about that at the, at the.
Our board has not discussed that issue.
Okay.
Okay.
Are you referring more, is that an inclusion in the packet that we added?
I think that that would regard, you're, you're talking about qualifications, which as it stands now, that is not.
Not in there.
Not in the charter. That would require a charter amendment.
Right.
To include, we're already doing those charter amendments to add something in that.
Say, say if somebody runs for any candidacy, and they had been employed for the, at the city, and they're, they're marked not eligible to be, to have employment again, or to be rehired. So if they'd been, I guess if the city, through their process, had determined that an employee wasn't a good employee, or unable to return to employment, I think it would be quite awkward then to, for the city to pay that person.
I, I think that you're setting a dangerous precedent, doing that. I think employment and running for office are two different things.
No, we get into lawsuits there.
Two D2.
Two, two private.
I would think that's.
I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering. How about if they have fines and fees with the city?
Or back taxes.
Or back taxes or anything else with the city. So they have to be in good standing with the city? I, it's a question.
I think that's also overreaching and would be unconstitutional.
Okey dokey.
And Julie, do you want to, could you, could you walk through the packet since you're more familiar with it? And I'll let her do the, because this packet was prepared.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were walking, I guess I was going through the packet as you were going through.
Yes.
Because a lot of the things were, a lot of things are, I thought, yeah, we already, I don't think we, we need to, to fine tooth it, but.
But there are some new forms that were not.
Yes, but some of the forms don't reflect the, the amounts that you, like, I, I see this, about the 500 versus the 250.
That could just be because.
That's in the legislation.
Yes.
It's not in the packet, though, yet.
No.
Once it passes, it would be.
I didn't notice that. Okay, great, thank you.
Yes. Okay, so, basically, this whole packet has been overhauled. It was in dire need of a.
Facelift.
Yes, thank you. So, important information, I basically took like three pages of information, summarized it, put it down on this, on this sheet. Covers a bunch of different stuff, just basic information that they're going to need. The next page is explanation of the change from reside to domicile. So that gives them a little bit of information to understand that change a little bit more. Certificate of nomination has been totally changed, that's going to be under the penalty of perjury. One of the other things I did, we used to have a separate packet for each district, for council, and then a separate one for mayor. We're using one template for all council member districts. There's no reason we need to have four separate packets. So basically, anywhere where the district number would be, I took out the number and put a dash. You're just going to fill in your district number throughout the packet, so that we can use the same one throughout. None of the fees changed, it's still 15 for council, 20 for mayor. There is an affidavit of alternate name. So before we, I think the form was a little bit confusing, a lot of people had questions about it. There wasn't like an opt-out kind of option on there, if you didn't have an alternate name. So, this is in here if you need to use it. And that, again, is under the penalty of perjury as well. And then if you do use the, the affidavit, there are two witness affidavits that are required to accompany that form. Those two are on one sheet right after the affidavit of alternate name. Very self-explanatory, which is, was my goal in redoing these forms. Financial disclosure, I don't think I printed the, I think I didn't include those in the packet, but we don't have anything to do with that. The financial disclosure forms are all done through the Ethics Commission, which they are.
Yeah, I advise the Ethics Commission, and that's something we're also looking at updating too, because I think they're incredibly confusing.
They are. So we're trying to help, as much as.
Yes.
So let me get through the financial disclosure forms. Then we have, so the financial reports, the campaign financial reports, totally redid those, because a lot of people had questions about them, they were confusing, they didn't know what to put where. So there's an acknowledgement of campaign finance report requirements, which gives you dates, how many days prior to the election, how many days after the election, these are required, that is required to be turned in and signed. I will say, one of the changes that I added for the cover sheets for the financial reports, I'm requiring the name of the treasurer to be on there, and the signature of the treasurer. There were times in this last election that I questioned the validity or even existence of the treasurer. So, they are going to be included in these financial reports as well. I have literally laid it out on the page, the cover sheet, when they're due, what is due, there's checkboxes on there if they want to use those. You can look at the forms yourself, but it's just basically updated. You've got your contributions, your in-kind services, loans, which is addressed in the charter, disbursements, outstanding expenses. And then at the very end, you have your signature page. On that signature page, you have to note your total contributions, total disbursements, total in-kind services, total loans, and then any outstanding expenses that you have. And then you need to put your account balance, and I even put on there as of this date. So it's very clear what I'm asking for in those reports. And then at the bottom, again, candidate and treasurer's signature. You have your initial reports, and you have your final reports, which, that is the same for, as last year. I do have a note on the final cover sheet that, please note that all accounts must have a zero balance by Friday, December the 10th, 2027. Trying to be very clear on the expectations, the deadlines, the information that we need. And then again, there's a signature page, and a reminder that the account balance must be zero upon submission of the final report.
Good grief, Julie, good job.
This was a lot of work, I mean, we had a lot of meetings.
It's a lot of work, just doing it.
Lou back there, too, I think he needs to be introduced.
And everyone, this is Lou Rish, Rimal, Rimal, and I can't say it right. He is also a member of the Board of Elections, and again, has worked diligently with the three of us, along with Julie, as well as Kim and Ashley have worked. Gosh, I, I can't even tell you how many times we've met, so. We, we have put in a lot of thought and tail into this, so. And also, did you want to mention with the treasury report that you're going to do training?
Yes, so the other thing that, I had an idea how I wanted to do it, but at the last meeting, they actually gave me a really good idea. So, once the election is over, I will meet with the candidate and their treasurer in person, we will have a meeting, and I'm going to go over everything. Actually, I think we're going to meet before that, too, to go over this packet and the expectations, what you need to submit, when, all that good stuff, to let them be able to ask questions, you know, on processes or deadlines or whatever. But we'll meet as a group, the candidate and the treasurer, to go over the packet and go over the expectations, and then that would be an opportunity for them to ask questions if they need it.
And one final thing, that's not included in the packet, but that we felt was important, because we fielded a number of complaints with the last election, was to come up with a complaint process. And that is included in the agenda about how to file a complaint, where to file a complaint, the process, once a complaint is filed, I think it's pretty clear, it's included in your packet. And we also actually put together a complaint form, so that way it would help with, when somebody were to contact Julie as clerk to identify what the issue is. So if you have any questions about those documents, they're also included.
The certificate of withdrawal was revamped as well.
Yep.
And with instructions, I typed up instructions for that as well. And I have to say, a lot of this, we didn't come up with ourselves, we used state forms and information and incorporated it to make our own forms.
Thank you.
Okay, so if I could summarize, I believe it seemed like there was consensus to move forward with all of the charter amendments, and the two amendments to, the two ordinances for the code amendments. And I don't think that there were any changes to that, but you are requesting a change to the campaign packet to, at the time the certificate of nomination is filed, to require that they provide two items to confirm or to substantiate their domicile, and that will be provided to Julie. Am I correct in that? Okay.
Is that everyone is good with that?
Right.
Thank you all for your work and, and your tireless efforts into this, we appreciate it.
The Herculean amount of work you all have done, Julie. Yes.
Yes.
Julie and.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry. There, there is one public comment, yes. Which, again, you can, thank you, Ms. Susan. And then we will.
Thank you. I've got to say, the council is still the best free entertainment in town, although the county council runs you a real close second. On these, I didn't come to talk about this, but a few random thoughts in my mind. It was interesting that nobody asked for the difference between residence and domicile. Why are we changing? Correct me if I'm wrong, Ashley, I think in this context, the courts say they mean more or less the same thing, don't they?
There's no back and forth, sure.
So domicile is essentially where you live and intend to live, you're not planning to go anywhere else. 36 hours ago, I resided in Boise, but I'm domiciled in Salisbury, I didn't change. I didn't change my domicile. I was just there temporarily. But my, I guess what I'm leading to is, when you meet somebody at a party or something, you know they're not from here, do you say, "Where are you domiciled?" Most people don't say that. They say, "Where do you live?", possibly, "Where do you reside?" And I'm bringing this up because we now want to have this affidavit under penalty of perjury, where somebody is domiciled. It's a legal term, and there are aspects of it. You can turn in your driver's license, and it might say you're Salisbury, Maryland, at 203 North Park Drive, or wherever, and that was issued some time ago, and now I live in Berlin, but I haven't changed my driver's license. So, I mean, that's, that's what you get into. My suggestion would be this: take out the penalty of perjury, because you don't want to dissuade people from running from office. And you can simply have a statement that they, if you want to use domicile, and I would suggest you explain what that means in legal terms, "To the best of my knowledge, information, and belief," and you sign it. Leave the penalty of perjury stuff out. If the person is lying, or they're seriously mistaken, then that can come out in the process. But leave the penalty of perjury out. I mean, do you honestly think you would lock somebody up if they lied about that? I mean, come on, our prisons are already overflowing. So that would be my suggestion for one change. The other thing is, I'd try to, as closely as you can and want to, use the language from the State Board of Elections. Now, you may want to change it in terms of when you zero out your account. I understand there's some changes you might want to make. But by and large, I'd use that language, because it's there, it's in place, and it's been time-tested. So those are my two suggestions, and I think you might want to take another look at this. Thank you.
All right, moving forward to council comments. We'll start with, and just seeing that administration's not here anymore, we'll proceed to council comments. We'll start with you, Council Vice President.
Okay, thank you very much. We did have another successful Third Friday. I definitely want to, I heard so many good things about it. I definitely want to thank the city employees for being there, for setting it up, taking it down. Police for monitoring it, keeping us safe. That was really nice. On this Saturday, the 24th, at 6:00 p.m. at the zoo, it's movie night. Members, your admission is free. Non-members, adults are $10, kids are $5. You get free popcorn if you bring some type of school supply, so that's kind of cool. School will be starting right after Labor Day, so many parents are loving this time of year. Another great reminder is that the Salisbury will host the Maryland Folk Festival, September 20th through 22nd. You could sign up to volunteer. There's so many slots of time and different things you can volunteer for. So if you're interested, you can reach out to any of us, you can reach out to the city. I think there is a volunteer link, is it easternshorevolunteers.com or .org?
It's a United Way, it's a United Way site.
Just go to the Folk Festival website, MD, uh, MD Folk Fest.
Forward you there.
MD Folk Fest. There is a link to volunteer.
And there is a link to volunteer. Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman Gregory. Thank you very much. And just in closing, just give a light, just give a gift of life. Make sure that you donate blood, plasma, or be an organ donor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Jackson. I know, I'm switching it up, because I go in the same order, so I just switch it up.
Okay, was it Tuesday? I can't even remember my days now, the 13th of August. We had an awesome walk drive with the Secretary of Housing and Community, state. And I didn't make the whole walk, but I did as much as I could, but I simply enjoyed myself. Well, I can see money coming in for housing. It is an enjoyable sight, especially affordable housing. I had the task of, in two weeks, I'll be scheduling a community event where I'm going to have our black businessmen or businesswomen who own businesses or families who own business in the Lake Street and West Main Street area. We want to name, give the names of those businesses, because we want to commemorate those businesses in that building. And it's going to be a joy to see that being done. That was one of my first tasks when I got on the city council, was if any building ever went there, I want to remember, that's our history. That Salisbury's history. And it was a thriving community at that time, and I want to remember every person that owned a business down there. So it'll be in two weeks, and it will be on Facebook, and I will let, we'll spread the word when we will have that. It would probably, I'm going to say at the VFW 10159, and it'll be on a Tuesday, I do know that, where we can actually sit down and have the community give names, because I have a list of names, but I'm quite sure I haven't gotten them all. So I would really love for the community to come out, once I post that date and the time for this meeting.
And just to speak to the power of Councilwoman Jackson's voice, when she made that ask at the, at the presentation, you know, the principals at my company called me immediately after and said, "Who was that? Who was that Councilwoman?" I said, "Councilwoman Jackson." She said, "He said, 'All right, we'll do it.' She just has to do the work." And so she, the power of her ask, asking right there, making sure that, which, again, I told the principals at my company when I started, I said, "This is Black Main Street." But, you know, you know, someone of Councilwoman Jackson's stature just solidifying, that definitely helped to make sure that it is happening. So thank you, Councilwoman.
Yeah, I can remember all of those businesses, and everybody was like, "You remember all that?" And I say, "Yes, I do remember that." And it's not vaguely, I remember it. I even have a picture of the old downtown. So, you know, I want that posted as well as, as the names. Also, we're looking for African-American, black entrepreneurs to take interest in the Market Street area of that building, to have their businesses there. We want them to have first dibs, and it'd be simply because it was a black community that thrived at that particular time. So we're looking for you all to come out, too, and I'll be posting that as well. I enjoyed myself that day. I really did. And I do want to say, there will be affordable housing in that area as well, and the Wycomico County Housing Authority is taking part in that as well. So I just want everybody to know that, you know, there's money coming in. It may not be coming in as rapid as we wanted to, but we're trying so hard to get affordable housing here. It is a need. I had a person ask me the other day, is affordable housing going in their neighborhood? And it kind of threw me for a loop, because I looked at that man, and I said, "Yes, why?" And he looked at me like to say, "Well, why in our neighborhood?" I said, "Why not in your neighborhood? Why not? We need affordable housing." I said, "We need it. People are homeless. Families are homeless. We need affordable housing." So it kind of changed his tune on, you know, why it was coming in his community. It doesn't matter, it's coming, I, I would like to see it in all communities, whether people like it or not. People are homeless, and we need affordable housing, and we need it, like, now. Also, since our Housing and Development Supervisor Director is here, I'd like to see, I know we're down on workers, but I'd like to see that corner of 13 and Church Street. I'd like to see that vamped. It needs to be beautified. It's a beautiful mural there, and it needs to be kept. I also, I wish somebody from Fields out there, but 617 West Isabella Street, the property donated by our first African-American on our city, which is Ms. Gertrude Shockley, her family donated property to the city. And I would love to see that property become what I've asked it to become, and that is a memorial garden in honor of her. I'm not saying we got to take up their whole lot, we just need a corner, just to make sure that, you know, she's commemorated as well. So that's all I have to say. And I'd like to continue my prayers for the two young people who were lost week before last. Keep their families lifted up. And also, I lost a cousin, and I will be funeralizing her this weekend. So keep me lifted in prayer. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman DeShiel?
Okay. I have two announcements. Number one, please commit this to memory, easternshormom.org, and I will be giving that to you for the next couple of weeks. It is at the Civic Center. The dates are, yes, you have to remember this, really, it's amazing. September 13th and the 14th. I was blessed to co-chair it for the last two times in 2017 and 19, and my buddy and I have turned it over to someone else this coming year. We need a lot of volunteers. We had over a thousand volunteers in 2019. Three thousand-plus procedures were done, that particular, in two days, and over a million dollars in donated services for the following: tooth extractions, fillings, and dental cleanings. And we take over the entire Civic Center, and you know how big that is. So please pass it along. Please also, if you know of any vets or homeless people that you can give this information to, we try to do a soft run with them Thursday, and then bring them in first thing Friday morning. But 100% volunteer-driven, and imagine bringing in 150 dental chairs, setting that entire Civic Center up, and having it all cleared out within four hours on Saturday afternoon. That's my one plug. The other one, I'm on the PAC-14 Committee, and this is amazing. If you have any talent out there, they're willing to help you. You don't have to come in and have everything prepared. They are willing to even coach you through something that you would like to share with the public. And they are going to be changing, think in your mind. PAC-14 will now be available, I believe, in December or January. Chris, you can edit this. It will be Channel 4 on Comcast instead of 14, but still bringing you all kinds of amazing, amazing things. Local producers, there's another, Community Roots, which is wonderful, so someone who wants to come and share what their strengths are and their gifts with someone else. So they're attending all kinds of events in the city, for the city and the county, and it is a gem that we have, we are blessed to have here. We had fun. We attended the Vienna Lower Eastern Shore Mayor's Association Dinner in Vienna last week, and we, we had a great time. There are events that are fun. The dinner, the food is great, the camaraderie. But what comes out of these dinners primarily is that there is a real drive to collaborate between the cities and the different municipalities, because sharing the funds and something that came up that was true and close to our heart was the possibility of sharing some of the large equipment, hence our, you know, garbage trucks that we had a problem with. And the whole idea is that everyone's in this together, it shouldn't be just territorial, and you have respect, and once you start the collaboration. And the other big deal is really pushing in Annapolis so that they know the Eastern Shore does exist. And one last thing, I wanted to thank the interns that have left us, and there are new interns coming on that are used throughout the city. And I'm not sure how, I have no power for this, but Julie is like the sole person right now, until she gets an assistant. So I'm thinking that maybe we should, you know, earmark one of the interns for Julie by herself.
She is, yes.
Anyway, but thank you, thank you, and those of you coming out. And thank you for all your work, the Election Board, and close, close to my heart, what they're doing in the schools.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And when the cat's away, the mice will play. You, I heard you had such a good time without me. I was under the weather, but.
Eight desserts, eight different cakes. Holy cow.
Councilwoman Gregory.
Just want to touch on, it was really good to see the governor down in Ocean City this week at Mako. Got the opportunity to say hello. He once again reaffirmed that if there's anything we need, we just need to pick up a phone and call him. His support has always been incredibly important, and, and I'm very grateful. Want to highlight that schools right now, UMES, and I think SU maybe this week as well, are moving in. Please be aware, there's going to be more traffic. Certain things are going to be sold out at Walmart. It's that time of year. Not only are the, gone, yes, but if you wait a week and a half, they'll be on clearance. So, so, yeah, no, just be aware that there's going to be a little bit more traffic. Parents are going to be dropping their kids off for the first time, or maybe the fourth time, and thinking, "Thank goodness, this is all going to be over." But, you know, just be aware of that in your, in your travels, and, and, you know, I want to welcome all the students who are coming back, who, who don't live here year-round. They're coming back from their summer vacation, and, and they've chosen to, you know, live here and go to school here, and I hope they decide to stay here. And on that note, I would hope that they would also look at volunteering for the Folk Festival. I'm going to put a plug in here for my favorite one, which is Bucket Brigade. It is so much fun. You get to dance at all the shows and swing a big bucket around and tell people to put money in it. I mean, that's, that's the most fun you can possibly have at the Folk Festival.
Yes.
I might have to switch mine up.
It's, it's a lot of fun, man. Come join it. It's fun. It's fun. So I also want to put a plug for, I want to thank Angela for pointing this out to me, Sensory Friendly Family Night at the zoo. They're doing an amazing job of making the zoo a sensory-friendly place for kids who are neurodivergent or outside of the norms, and I think that that is fantastic, and I really wholeheartedly support that, and I really, I'm very glad to see them doing that. On a little bit of a personal note, my husband's 50th birthday, and he's going to kill me for saying that, is coming up this week, and I just want to thank him for the support that he has given me over the years, and also how much he's overcome, because it's also this week, 18 years ago that he had a stroke at the age of 32, and he had to relearn how to read and write and talk all over again.
Oh, wow.
And, you know, for him to make this milestone of a birthday, I am just incredibly proud of him, and I'm blessed to have him in my life, so.
Happy birthday to him.
Happy birthday.
Yes. Thank you, Councilwoman.
We're going to have to go back to Vienna to get one of those cakes.
No, because he's also diabetic. Please don't.
With, with me this time. With, with me, I hope this time, and not forget me. I'm gonna, I'm surprised my voice has made it thus far, but as Councilwoman Jackson mentioned, with, we celebrated a lot of different projects, and I was excited for it this past week. And one of those projects was actually, you know, the project that Councilwoman is talking about, Lot 30 Project, but also one of them was actually the Lot 111 and 15 with the Unity Square. And so council was actually copied mid-July on a request for text amendment with that for, for the zoning code. And I know the mention was made about, you know, with council's action as far as that case, et cetera, et cetera. Well, again, a text amendment, which has been brought up time and time again by, by different stakeholders in the community for changing the zoning code and amending that would bring any sort of case moot. And so we're looking forward to that being brought, and it's, it's not, you know, brought up at this Planning Commission meeting, but look forward to that being brought up at the September Planning Commission meeting, to, again, align those, those density requirements for the Central Business District with, with our contemporary city standards. So we look forward to that, and council looks forward to that continuing forward, and also with us getting the parking garage for all these exciting things that's happening in our city. Also, what Councilwoman Jackson said, keep the families of Demi and Tyron, Junior, in your prayers. They definitely need that moving forward, as they relate to rest this past weekend. There are numerous back-to-school, like Councilwoman Gregory said, numerous back-to-school events. I tried to just do a cursory look on Facebook. There's a back-to-school community bash at First Baptist Church of Salisbury, my church home, this Saturday, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00. That is, that is on the corner of Booth and Lake Street? Yes, Booth and Lake Street. And also, the Fresh Start Event at the Civic Center is on Sunday at 1:00 p.m. That's at the Civic Center. So, it's, I'm sorry, Booth and Delaware Avenue. But yes, Fresh Start at the Civic Center, huge event, wonderful event, free, there's care cuts going on there, there's, you know, styling, so definitely make it out to those events this, this weekend. And Councilwoman Jackson has one more thing. And Councilwoman Jackson has one more thing, yes?
Yeah, I do have one more thing, and that is, any stakeholder that is in the floodplains of Salisbury, I need you to get in touch with me, that means businesses or private homes, would you please contact me? We have some information for you that we would like to get to you, and I think we're going to have a meeting of such. So if you find it in your heart, and you need help, or you need whatever, please contact me, my number is 410-726-8478. It's imperative that you get in touch with me, thank you.
And if you can't get in touch with her, call the city clerk, and we'll make sure you get in touch with Councilwoman Jackson, thank you for that. And with that, this work session is now adjourned, and the time is now 6:56 p.m., and I call the special meeting to order, and I will entertain a motion to second to adopt the special meeting agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of the special meeting agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And I'll entertain a motion to second to approve Order Number 2883 for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance Number 2883, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the city's general capital project fund budget to provide additional funds for the Truitt Street Community Center expansion. Whereas the City of Salisbury is committed to expanding the Truitt Street Community Center in order to serve more youth in the community, and whereas due to increase in material labor costs, the project costs now exceed the original project allocation. And whereas the city has determined that there are sufficient available investment interest funds in the FY 2022 bond pool, and whereas a reallocation of the FY 2022 investment interest to fund and execute the project is $55,325, and whereas the allocation as provided here must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval for fits of council, Section 1 of Ordinance 2883 reads, "The City of Salisbury's general capital project fund budget being hereby amended as follows. Increase revenue for TSCC rehab account description interest, account number 980225, I'm sorry, 9802245611070067, by the amount of $55,325, and increase expense for TSCC rehab for account description construction, account number 98122513026-70067, by the same amount, which is $55,325."
Oh.
Probably for formality sake, we should just wait for Council President DeShawn to return.
Yes.
I know, it's been, it takes been a long day.
They were good. Talking about the cakes.
We're waiting for you.
We're waiting for you to call a vote.
You see, fussing? All those in favor of Ordinance Number 2883 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Having no further business, the special meeting is now adjourned.